Keep talking, Darren, can you hear me? You're good?
We are on air.
All right, thank you. The 2330th meeting of the Milwaukee City Council is ordered. This meeting is being conducted by video conference. The public has been invited to watch the meeting on the city's YouTube channel, Comcast Cable Channel 30 in City Limits, or by logging into the Zoom video conference as an attendee. The public may submit comments in writing by email to ocr@milwaukeeoregon.gov. There will be opportunities for the public to give oral testimony during today's meeting. When it is time to take public comments, staff will monitor the email inbox, the Zoom participant list, and the Zoom chat to see if anyone would like to speak. We will take comments in the order that they are received and seen. Spanish translation services are available upon request. The public is asked to request translation and other meeting accessibility services at least 48 hours before the meeting. Contamos con servicio de traducción o español cuando sea solicitado. Se pide al público que solicite servicios de traducción y otros servicios de accesibilidad para reuniones por lo menos 48 horas antes de la reunión. Translation services are also available in other languages. The public is asked to request translation and other meeting accessibility services at least 48 hours before the meeting. If members of the public become disruptive, we will mute and remove them from the video conference. If that fails to stop the disruptions, we will recess the meeting and return within five minutes. If we are unable to continue, council will briefly meet off-air to move unfinished business to the next council agenda. Alrighty, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The city of Milwaukee respectfully acknowledges that our community is located on the ancestral homeland of the Clackamas people. In 1855, the surviving members of the Clackamas signed the Willamette Valley Treaty, also known as the Kaipuya Et Cetera Treaty, with the federal government in good faith. We offer our respect and gratitude to the indigenous people of this land. Tonight's announcements. Join a virtual discussion with the social justice leader and North Clackamas School District Board Chair Libra Ford and our newest city councillor, Desi Nicodemus, on February 3rd at 6:30 PM. This Milwaukee Historical Society and Letting Library lecture series called Celebrating Black Excellence will explore experiences of how they have been treated because of the color of their skin, not only in Oregon, but also where they grew up and their experiences throughout the world. There are a variety of ways to watch and participate in the discussion. Visit the city's calendar at milwaukeeoregon.gov. The city continues to seek nominations for the 2020 Volunteer of the Year. Nominees can include anyone who resides in Milwaukee or is a member of a nonprofit organization or business that serves the Milwaukee community. Those nominating the person are asked to discuss the nominee's volunteer work and discuss how it has improved Milwaukee. Nominations are accepted through an online form at engage.milwaukeeoregon.gov. If you aren't able to access the online form, please call 503-786-7568. A new project page has been added to the city's Engage Milwaukee site that focuses on equity, inclusion, and justice. Currently, you can share ideas for what a truly equitable Milwaukee looks like, ask questions, find important links, and much more. Visit Engage Milwaukee to participate in engage.milwaukee.gov. Join me at the Shearer State of the City address this Thursday, February 4th at 5:30 PM to hear about the city's accomplishments for the past year and plans for 2021. Visit the city calendar at milwaukeeoregon.gov for information about how to join the event. The North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District is sponsoring an inclusion bingo boogie event on February 17th and March 17th using Zoom. The program is designed for individuals with a disability or special needs, age 12 to adult. Register at ncprd.com or email sports@ncprd.com. That's S.P.O.R.T.S@ncprd.com. Get a taste of Chinese culture at a drive-through Chinese New Year celebration on Friday, February 19th from 11:30 AM to 2 PM. Registration is $10 per person and must be completed by February 8th. All proceeds support the Milwaukee Center's Meals on Wheels program. Visit ncprd.com to register. For more information about each of these events and others, please visit the city's homepage where you will find the city calendar at www.milwaukeeoregon.gov. If you don't have access to the internet, please call the city's general number at 503-786-7555 and staff will provide you with the information you need or connect you with someone who can help.
Mr. Mayor, can I add a couple of events? For those who like to get out and pull ivy or help work in our parks and natural areas, there are events the next three Saturdays. So this Saturday, the 6th and the 13th, there's ivy pulling on the Dave's Killer Bread property along Menthorn Creek. And then on Saturday, the 20th, there's planting in Menthorn Springs wetland. And people who want details on those and how to sign up for them should visit the Milwaukee Parks Foundation Facebook page. Or yeah, that's the best source. Thank you.
Alrighty, thank you Lisa. Anybody else? I don't see any, okay. Our next items are our Proclamations and Awards. We are starting with Celebrating Black Excellence Month tonight. And it's a proclamation, and that will be presented by Councilor Nicodemus, the Milwaukee Historical Society's Greg Heimer, Rowan Middle School teacher Zach Tate, and Rowan Middle School student Angel Wilton.
In my opinion, black history is not something that should be taught or celebrated in isolation. Black history is American history. That's why we recognize black excellence. And when I say black excellence, it's more than just a catchy hashtag of words across the front of a hooded sweatshirt. Black excellence is in fact our ancestors' wildest dreams. It is what we as people of African descent strive for each and every day. It is the lifeblood of what keeps us going when it seems our humanity is being questioned. Black excellence is me and every other black person working towards the advancement of our people. Today's proclamation ensures that my voice matters, that my intellect is wanted, that my sacrifices are worth it. But most of all, it reminds me that in order for the next generation to have a path to follow, we must continually work towards the dreams and aspirations that we are told we cannot accomplish. Thank you for today's proclamation.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Nicodemus, Mayor, councilors, and city staff. Thank you so much for having Milwaukee Historical Society present Black Excellence proclamation this evening. Look, 2020 and 3/4 of 2021 are going to be difficult for Milwaukee Historical Society, the owners and operators of Milwaukee Museum, located at 3737 Southeast Adam Street, currently closed because of COVID restrictions. We miss being out in the public and seeing our visitors and spreading the great history of past and present to our community. But we all have sad stories to tell, so I'm not going to dwell. I just want everybody to know that thanks in part to the support of City of Milwaukee, Milwaukee Museum is physically sound, here to stay, and is ready to greet the public when the time is right. We want to thank our donors and corporate members for their continued support. Milwaukee Historical Society gains income from donations and membership. This year, we are asking our patrons to take care of their families, friends, and loved ones first. Then, give an extra tip at your local restaurant or buy a gift for someone at a local business. After all that, if you have $20 to become a member at the museum, then please do so. We appreciate the donation and memberships, but others are in much dire need than us. Take care of our community, and our community will take care of us. So let us rejoice for once. It is very rare when a historian can see that a year in the present will have impact for the rest of its residents' lives. The year 2020 may be one of the greatest years Milwaukee has ever had. It created structures, gatherings, and people that will be remembered for at least the next 100 years. Late 2019, Main and Washington Street opened up with improvements, a plaza, and a brand-new building called Axel Tree. On January 11th, the new and improved Letting Library opens up to the public. January 25th, Cromberg Park Multi-Use Pass, including the bridge, opens to the public. June 9th, Milwaukee Bay hosts the largest protest in its history, Black Lives Matters Sit In for Solidarity. In August, a new mural of nature painted on Chance Stakery. August 18th, the Comprehensive Plan, which adopts future land use, was adopted. October 22nd, the new mural unveiling, featuring Ah Bing and Hadley's at 40th and Harvey Street. And November 3rd, Milwaukee elects its first black city councillor, Desi Nicodemus. In December, the new Milwaukee High School will almost be completed. So let us celebrate our accomplishments tonight and our future together. Speaking of accomplishments, join us along with our partners, City of Milwaukee, Facebook Group Milwaukee Chit Chat, Letting Library, and Willamette Fall Studio for our Letting Library Lecture Series entitled Celebrating Blacks Excellence, Wednesday, February 3rd, beginning at 6:30 PM. The virtual program features Social Justice Leader and North Clackamas School District Chair Libra Ford and our newest councillor, Desi Nicodemus. The program features a discussion with Chair Ford and Councilor Nicodemus on various topics. We will explore relatable experiences of how they have been treated because of the color of their skin, not only in Oregon, but where they grew up and their experiences throughout the world. We will discuss their political wins and accomplishments and explore why they ran and what does it mean for our community and what enhancements they are striving for. We will examine what it means to bring together communities and creating unity by seeking their advice of why it is important to be involved and accomplish goals inside our community. Because of our partners, there are a variety of ways to watch and even participate in the discussion. By using the Zoom link available on the city and library website, you can ask questions in the chat feature during the live broadcast. You can watch live on Comcast Channel 30, City Milwaukee YouTube page, or livestream on Facebook Group Milwaukee Chit Chat. Please check city website for details. I want to thank Councilor Nicodemus for setting up our program today. Councilor Nicodemus, you have been on council for one month, and already you are carrying on the tradition of your fellow councilors, predecessor, and city staff about aiding the community and accomplishing their goals and helping those you are able to help. Thank you again for making this connection. Tonight, I am so proud to introduce Zach Tate, a sixth-grade language and arts social studies teacher at Rowan Middle School. This is his second year as a Black Student Union advisor at the school, along with Brian Howleton and Stephanie Dreamin. He grew up in Portland, went to Clackamas High School, and attended college at Southern Oregon University. Tonight, he and his colleagues will talk about the success of the program, what he enjoys about it, and introduce the true star of the show, Angel Wilton. Mr. Tate, thank you for being here.
Hey, thanks for having me. I'd like to recognize everyone who helped put this event together. I think it's such a big deal. And I want to thank you all for having me and my colleagues and our very own Angel here to represent Rowan Middle School and the Black Student Union, so it can be a part of something meaningful. As you mentioned, we just got our Black Student Union up and running last year. It's been a real joy to watch it grow and build connection with students. And even though our BSU looks a lot different than it did last year, we're really proud of our students for showing up and continuing to show resilience through these tough times. I would like to take a moment to recognize and introduce you all to my wonderful and incredible BSU colleagues. They're both very passionate and truly inspirational to work with. I'm going to introduce Brian Howleton first. I'm going to introduce Brian Howleton first.
Yes. Hello, everyone. My name's Brian Howleton, so thank you for having me. As Zach said earlier, thank you for putting together this event that's given our students the opportunity to be heard and encouraged to embrace their voice. You know, while helping to establish our Row BSU, it's been a surreal moment for me to be one of the people that helped plant the seed and watch it grow has been a very humbling experience for me. And I'm extremely proud of our students, our advisors, and all our supporters of the program. So thank you again for acknowledging the powerful spirit of our young voices. And I would like to introduce our school councillor and co-adviser, Stephanie Dreamin.
Hello, everyone. Thank you, Brian. It's been such a pleasure, as I said, to work together, the three of us meet a lot. We have developed a lot of cool programs and games and platforms for our students. And so we are so happy to be a part of this. And we're really grateful that Angel is showing you her talents and her passions and sharing that with everyone. I can't wait for you to see and hear what she's got going. Angel, you look beautiful. You're going to do great. The BSU has been an amazing experience. We did become official last year. Shout out to Desi, Councillor Desi, that is. You did aid that a little bit beforehand. We were kind of unofficial. It was really just a hangout group in my office, so it's nice to be official because we could just do more stuff when people recognize who we are and who my students are and my co-advisers, who have been doing great stuff. In the past, we've been able to do some college field trips. We've been able to work with Milwaukee High School a little bit. Now we're partnering with Clackamas a little bit. So we've been doing a lot of stuff, both on the school and on the mental health end and on the community end. And we've gotten donations, which has been really helpful. So if anybody wants to donate, that's my plug. We're always taking donations so we can keep doing good things and giving the kids prizes and celebrating and all that stuff. That being said, Angel, I'm so excited. Back to you, Mr. Tate.
Cool. Thank you, Stephanie and Brian, and yes, Desi as well, and all of you. Before I do turn it over to Angel, I just want to say what an absolute joy it's been having her as a part of our BSU. She's always a student who's engaged, very expressive, and also like also very vulnerable, which I really appreciate. She helps set the tone for our BSU and making it a place of respect and makes it so kids are willing to share. And I just really appreciate that about Angel. So without further ado, I will go ahead and turn it over to Angel.
Hey, everybody. It's Angel, and I'm in eighth grade, and I go to Row. And the song that I, today I'm going to be singing a song, and the song that I chose is Lift Every Voice and Sing. And the reason why I chose that song is because it's history and it helps me realize that my skin is beautiful in every way. And no matter if I fall or I pick up, I'm so beautiful, by the way. So let me get the lyrics. Lift every voice and sing till the lamb's birth. Ring with the harmony of liberty. Let our rejoicing rise high as the listening sky. Let it ring sound loud as the rolling sea. Sing a song full of the faith that the dark passes on us. Sing a song full of the hope that the present has found. And us facing the rising sun of our new day begun. Let us march on till victory is won. Sony the road we tread, bitter the chestening brought. Built in the days when hope unborn had died. Yet with the steady beat, I'm not a weary. Come to the place where it just far decide. We have come over a way that winter's has been worn. We have come dreading our path through the blood of the sun. Did I outburn the gloomy past? Till now we stand at last, where the white glade of our bright star is cast. God of our weary years, God of our silent tears. Thou who hast brought us thus far on the way. Thou who hast by thy might led us into the light. Keep us forever in the path we pray. Let our feet stray from the places our God where we may be. Let our hearts drunk with the wine of the world we forget. The shadow be me thy head. May we forever stand true to our God, true to our native land. Our native land. The reason, the reason the song, the reason why I chose that song and the reason what it means to me is because that means that if I fall and I get back up, that means that I'm still beautiful, no matter what people around me have to say, no matter if I feel like I'm not or if I just doubt myself to the point where I can't stand. And that means that God, and for me, it feels like God knows that I'm there and that the history behind my skin is amazing and is wonderful and it should be expressed in very different ways. And yeah, and I want to add that there are so many young, young kids out there that are afraid to show who they are and brace their skin up, brace who they are and show who their skin is. And I want to say that it doesn't matter what anybody else around you has to say about it. It's amazing. It's, it's great. It's, we get to be unique in our own way. We don't get to fit in with everybody else. And that's what I think. I think that I'm fitting, I'm standing out. I'm not fitting in. I feel like if, if I'm not, if I'm not standing out in my own unique way, I'm just fitting in with the crowd. And I want to say that everybody else around in the world is going to tear you down. And just know that your skin is beautiful and it's wonderful. And as experienced as being a black student, I always felt like in my heart that I wasn't doing enough or I wasn't saying this right or I wasn't doing this right. So I just felt like, you know, that I wasn't standing out. And now that I've talked to people and putting myself out there as a senior or as a young student in the BSU, I feel like that I've done a lot. And I'm proud of my skin. I'm proud of who I am. And I feel like I can stand up and be, you know, myself. And I want to say thank you, everybody, for what you've done to, to recognize black excellence at Black History Month. I want to thank you all.
You are incredible. I think you know that tonight, but you are, that was the most beautiful experience I have had in a very long time. In the time of COVID, when you don't get art in nearly the same way. That literally was stunning. Well done, Angel.
Indeed, indeed. I was looking at the black screen with your name, Angel, and I was thinking how aptly named this young woman is. She is indeed an angel with that voice. Really extraordinary. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Angel. I wish I had that when I was your age. It took me 47 years to get to the point where, you know, I'm willing to, you know, put myself out there. And you're in eighth grade, and middle school is hard. Middle school is the hardest schooling you will go through. And look what you just did. That was amazing. Thank you.
You did it, Angel. You can breathe now. Relax. You did a great job. You didn't mess up. Everybody's proud of you. That was amazing.
We will be asking you to do other things when we're post-COVID. So don't think that this is over for you. I know how to find you and ask you to help us. You are an incredible leader. Really well done. Do we want to move into doing the proclamation, Mayor? Or how, how would you like to proceed next?
Yeah, Desi, you are going to read the proclamation, right? Or no?
No, I wasn't. I don't have it pulled up.
Desi, I can share the screen, and it'll be on your screen to read.
Great, Scott. Thank you.
Can everyone see it?
Yes.
Okay.
Whereas in February, we recognize and acknowledge the struggles of Black Americans for racial justice that stirred the very conscious conscience of our nation and are helping to guide the shape of her character. And whereas Black Americans for generations have courageously led the pursuit of justice and equality from Harriet Tubman to Martin Luther King Jr. and beyond, as our nation struggles to overcome the systemic racism that results in persistent inequality, such leaders are crucial to guide us to the principle that all people are created equal. And whereas Black Americans have made significant contributions to our nation's economic, educational, political, artistic, literary, scientific, and technological advancements despite historical and current injustices. And whereas in Milwaukee, we celebrate the contributions of Black Americans who have been active in our community, including entrepreneurial boxing promoter George Moore and Milwaukee Pastry Kitchen proprietors Herdis and Dorothy Hadley. And whereas recent incidents have given rise to the greater awareness of the continued discrimination and even violence that Black Americans face daily and the importance of a greater national dialogue to promote understanding and break down barriers. And whereas individuals, we must learn more about the history of Black Americans generally and in Oregon in particular, and work to build a Milwaukee where every person has equitable access to educational and employment opportunities and housing. Now, therefore...
I, Mark Gambah, Mayor of the City of Milwaukee, a municipal corporation in the county of Clackamas in the state of Oregon, and with full support and sponsorship of the Milwaukee Historical Society and Oregon Black Pioneers, do hereby proclaim February 2021 to be Celebrating Black Excellence Month in Milwaukee and do recommend its observance with appropriate programs and activities. Thanks, Desi.
Thank you.
Alrighty. I will look to sign that on Thursday, Scott.
And just as a plug for anyone watching, the event is when, Greg?
Tomorrow.
Thank you for that. February 3rd, 6:30. Check the city website for details. And that again is...
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Tomorrow. So 6:30. Yeah, lots of ways to watch it. So you can watch it on Channel, Comcast Channel 30, participate in the Zoom, livestreamed on Milwaukee Chit Chat, and on the city's YouTube site. So we're looking really forward to listening to Councillor Nicodemus and Chair Libra Ford to talk about their lives a little bit. And Angel, I want to thank you so much for joining us tonight. I, I didn't want to chime in, but you make us all very proud. And so thank you. We really do appreciate it. And thank you guys very much for letting us host this event.
I think Angel has a question.
Yes.
No, I have a question. I just want to add something. I want to thank everybody else. I want to thank everybody for the great comments and compliments. I do want to say that it was hard for me. I'm not going to lie. It was hard for me being the only Black student in some of my class, some of my schools that I went through, went to. And it was hard getting comments on my hair or the way how I do things or how the way that I talk. So the fact that I put myself out there and that I don't listen to what people around me have to say anymore felt really great. And that's the main thing that I struggled with hard, getting bullied and being treated the way I do and getting told that I would never get to where I am now, speaking loudly and, you know, seeing like nobody else is watching. And I just want to say thank you to everybody and recognizing that this, this month is a big thing and a big deal that black history or black excellence is not just a hashtag. It's not something that you can just go around and, you know, you know, treat it badly. It's something that every, every human being as a Black, as a Black human being celebrates to talk about their history and who they are as a person. So I just want to thank everybody for the compliments and to recognize this month.
Thank you, Angel, very much.
I, I had a question for Stephanie. You mentioned that you take donations. Do you want to share with the public how you can donate to the Black Student Union?
Of course, anything for my children. You can write a check to Row Middle School, and then in the memo, you can put BSU. That sounds for Black Student Union. And then we have our own little fund within all of the big school fund. But that is specific for us. And some of the things we use it for, in case you're curious, could be to help like get some food for an event or do, we had a Halloween night where we got candy packets, packages. We put a bunch of stuff together and the kids could drive up and get it. So finding ways to still communicate and connect. And we got some T-shirts. And we were actually getting matching sweatsuits soon. So yeah, it's used all for the kids, to help them, support them, encourage them, and all that excitement. But yes, thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to lend my thanks to all of you for bringing, for helping to bring this so much, so alive. I think this is probably the best presentation we've had in a long time. And certainly, you know, the, the best one that, that we've done to honor black excellence. So thank you all very much for all of your hard work and contributions. Angel, I love your name and your voice. You're amazing. Thank you so much for putting yourself out here and, and sharing your talents with us.
Sorry, TriMet.
It's going to be really hard to follow that. But at least it's going to be a very important conversation around a similar topic.
Bad for those guys. All right. Well, I guess with that, we should let them slog on and, and attempt to, to best that. So we have a presentation by TriMet's Public Affairs Executive Director, Jacey Venata, Transit Equity and Inclusion Director, John Gardner, and Safety and Security Executive Director, Maria Blag. So please, everyone, welcome.
Yeah, I'll just kick us off, Mayor Gambah and councilors. I just, a quick introduction for myself. As you made note, Jacey Venata, I'm the Executive Director of Public Affairs. I know many of you have worked with Bernie Bottomley in the past, who is my predecessor, and I just wanted to introduce myself to you. And I want to, as we move forward, I want to be the first phone call if you ever have an issue or need help at TriMet. I hope that I'm your first, your first phone call. And Mayor Gambah and councilors, I'll get you my phone number. And I already know that you have my phone number.
Jacey, I think you have been for about four and a half years. And I also just want to give him a little bit of credit because he helped us kick open the orange line. So Jacey is not new to Milwaukee. He has been doing the work here for a long time.
Yeah, thank you for that. And so I just want to help continue that long partnership. And it is evident tonight in our presentation that John Gardner and Marla Blag will give to you and how we can move forward as we reimagine public safety aboard our buses and trains in, in Milwaukee and across our region. And with that, I'll let, let them take it from here. Thank you so much for having us.
I apologize, Marla. I misread that.
No worries. I get called Maria all the time. So it's that L. It's a little bit too short to be an L.
All right. Well, I think the presentation's going to fall to me, and then Jacey and Marla will be able to ask, answer any questions that might come up. But I completely agree with the mayor and the rest of the council, what a tough act to follow. My goodness. We've had a chance to do this presentation a couple of times before, and this is definitely the hardest handoff. But amazing grace and talent and poise to Angel and to the educators and the mentors who've obviously helped her. Just incredibly proud. It's just a resident of the region that we have that kind of talent amongst us. So I'm going to share my screen and just kind of jump into it. Let's see here. Apologies in advance, it's quite a long presentation, but I'm gonna try to go through it as fast as possible and then leave as much time as you can offer for questions. So just a little bit of context. Obviously, this project was launched this last summer in the heat of what was happening, not just in Portland, but around the country, related to racial, related to the murders that occurred last summer, and the calls for racial justice. Specifically, calls for racial justice and policing, which led to candid conversations about race, safety, and equity, and the need for lasting change. As the region's public transit provider, TriMed recognized we have a specific role in this as it relates to how we partner with local law enforcement, but how we want to make our system continually safe and welcoming for all that use it. So thus was born the Reimagining Public Safety Project, that was an initiative championed by our general manager, who then shifted $1.8 million out of our transit police contracts and other funds, focusing on three specific efforts. One, understanding better how we can serve our community better with this $1.8 million by doing community-wide listening sessions and focus groups. And then forming a new sort of regional panel of thought leaders to take that information and develop a series of recommendations to move the system forward. And then now, we're in the process of beginning to pilot those recommendations. So a little bit of background about the work. Obviously, we weren't the only table being convened, and we weren't the only conversation happening. We worked in partnership with the Governor's Racial Justice Council and the Reimagined Oregon Effort, which was an effort led by mostly African-American leaders across the region, wanting to revisit many different structural changes that they have been championing for a long time. So we did not do our work in isolation or in a vacuum. We also tried to take a very specific approach to our efforts. First, we partnered with coal-specific coalitions in terms of the Coalition of Communities of Color and other private and public nonprofits to sort of help us design the project and the approach. We also worked with certified firms to help us look at what was happening across other communities. How are other public transit agencies looking at safety and security and making improvements on their system? And we actually worked with Portland State to look at our safety outcomes to sort of leverage the expertise of a third-party organization to help us understand where there's opportunities for improvement. But the core of this project, the core of the work, was really about community engagement. And even though we've all been suffering through COVID and trying to do anything to engage folks, especially last summer, and during the height of the calls for racial justice was hard, we leveraged amazing partnerships with 42 community-based organizations from across the tri-county area. I use logos because generally speaking, most of you probably recognize these organizations. They've been here for a long time, holding it down and doing a ton of work, comprehensive wraparound social services and many others. And they were in the front line, whether it was promoting our online survey, doing focus groups, or doing one-on-one phone calls to make sure everybody that could participate had a chance to participate and inform what we were going to be doing next with, as it relates to safety and security. From that larger group, we identified leaders across around 16 organizations that we felt represented thought leaders that can help us take that information gathered from the outreach and sort of land on a series of recommendations on how to move the system forward. Those organizations were Coalition of Communities of Color, PRC and Rosemary Anderson High Schools, Self-Enhancement Incorporated, Constructing Hope, Disability Rights Oregon. We also had Kevin Modigo, who's a retired transit police commander. We had Professional Builders Development Group, the Highland African-American Youth Coalition, Word is Bond, Cascadia Behavioral Health, Basic Rights Oregon, Central Culturale. We had the opportunity to have a former general manager who's worked across multiple transit agencies. We had experts from the American Public Transportation Association. We had a partner from JOIN, and a representative from Clackamas County Disability. So that's who we brought to the table. And then before we began sort of reimagining the safety and security system on this, on our current system, we wanted to make sure they had scale for what we were already working with. So we provided them a brief TriMed at a glance. And so what I'll be doing now is giving you a little bit of the information we shared with them over the course of our conversations. The first thing is we, it was important for us, for them to understand who we are now in terms of our diversity. Not everybody understands or knows that TriMed's board is a majority of women and men of color, as is TriMed's executive leadership team. It's made up of a majority of women and men of color. And our staff are actually very diverse. We're more diverse as a staff group of our 3,300 employees than the city of Portland itself. But when you're thinking of reimagining safety on the public transportation system, you have to have a sense of the scale of the system. So we talked a lot about how big the system is. Across the tri-county area, we have about 530 square miles. We have a ton of infrastructure, as you know, as the Orange Line is part of that, as are our bus lines in Milwaukee and in Clackamas. Every morning, 700 buses pull out of our garages across the tri-county area, and over 65 trains as well. In a normal time, we provide transportation services to just under 100 million riders, and that was true in 2019. Thirty-seven percent of all the trips taken on TriMed are taken by people of color, and 40% of their trips are taken on our MAX system. We do a ton to understand our ridership. And so we do a lot of onboard surveying and follow-up. We have an incredibly robust riders club. So we have a sense of the income levels and those riders who are transit-dependent versus choice riders. We also have a good amount of information about how our ridership compares to the regional population. It was also important for our committee to understand that the reimagined effort was just one more in a long series of efforts we do on a monthly basis to stay connected to our regional community, whether it's through our Transit Equity Advisory Committee, who brings together 16 community-based organizations every month, or our efforts with limited English proficient communities, or our efforts in serving folks with limited mobility options and through our Committee on Accessible Transportation. We do a ton to make sure we are understanding what our riders and our community needs, and we're responsive. One example of that is efforts that actually Mayor Mark Gamba was involved in, our Low Income Fair Program. He and many other stakeholders helped us form that program three years ago. And today, 33,000 folks across the tri-county area save up to 72% off the cost of transportation every month and on every trip. In addition to that, TriMed puts about $1 million in fair grants out to 100 community providers every year. And then last year, through the state of Oregon, we were able to launch a $700,000 grant program to the Keep Oregon Moving Initiative for Clackamas and Washington County high school students. We also have a pretty strong history when it comes to equity through infrastructure. So if we have resources, we do our best to make sure those resources go out in a fair and equitable manner to women and minority-owned construction firms. On our division project, for example, we have the largest award to an African-American firm in the state of Oregon's history. And so our community advisory tables have a chance to participate in these conversations to help steward those resources. And so this was all meant to set the stage for, as we convene our partners, we're serious about the focus and we're serious about the follow-through. Then we had to get down to the seriousness of safety and security. So before we asked our committee to help us think of new strategies and new processes, it was incredibly important for them to have a baseline in terms of what it looks like now. So we walked through the different representatives we have on the region's public system. We have a mix of folks. We have everything from ride guides and customer service reps to fare inspectors and contracted security partners. And of course, we also leverage and partner with community policing through 14 municipal police agencies across the tri-county area. Like many organizations, it was important to have our committee understand the current challenges we're facing, both those related to COVID, but those that were here before COVID. Challenges like database management and just integrating all the IT technology that's required to manage the system, but also staffing shortages, both within TriMed, but also our contracting efforts. And obviously, as many of you know on the council, challenges related to budgets and contracts. And what we heard and what we know, we also have challenges on the system as it relates to lighting and infrastructure. As part of our research and looking at other systems, we found out a lot of information. But one surprising thing was that for an organization like TriMed, who provides roughly 100 million rides a year, our safety footprint is incredibly small. Looking at other like transportation properties, specifically Denver or King County up in Seattle, you'll see that our sworn officers, our partnerships with community policing, for example, we have a relatively small footprint. And when you look at the orange column, these are just partnered security firms. We still are relatively small. You'll see King County has a few less staff than we do. The difference is, years ago, we worked with the community to demilitarize the presence on transit in Portland and the metro area, and so none of our contracted security officers have any weapons or are not armed. And that's not true for King County or Denver. So even in that, you'll see that it might look similar, but how we provide safety and security in the system is very different even today. What we've heard, unfortunately, as hopefully not as surprises, over the last year, we have a giant increase in the amount of safety-specific customer service calls. So this is an example of 200 phone calls we received over the last 10 or so months, all specifically asking for more security on the system or more fare enforcement. There were some that asked for less security, but I think that was in maybe like four of those 200 calls. Executive Director Marla Blag was able to walk the committee through a series of areas of focus for the division. And right now, her emphasis is really on partnering and leveraging more highly-trained non-police security personnel in the system, and continuing to work with municipal police forces like Multnomah County and other law enforcement agencies to sort of be part of that safety mix on the system. But the focus there is really more of a balance of community-based policing, leveraging more proactive, friendly rider interactions. And her and her team are definitely committed to moving forward the recommendations. But the real work again was the outreach that we were able to conduct over the summer months, both through the protests, but also through the fires. And in Clackamas, we received nine to, I want to say nine to 11% of all the responses came from the Clackamas County area. So through our outreach partnerships with all those community-based organizations, we actually heard from 13,000 folks related to our survey, 700 of which were non-English respondents. And you can get a sense of some of the languages we heard from. Recognizing that technology is not accessible to everyone, some of our partners were able to do one-on-one socially-distanced interviews. And we also did a lot of focus groups and on-phone conversations as well to just provide as many forms as possible to get information. Some of the things we heard were that generally people feel safer on our bus system than our MAX, and that seven in 10 people feel welcome on TriMed. That's the good news. The bad news, of course, is three in 10 do not. Those who tended to feel less safe and less welcome on the system were people of color, Black, Native Americans, folks living with a disability, and females, but also non-binary or other gender identity writers, as well as non-English speakers. People felt that on-street customer service and unarmed security were some of the best uses of safety, made them feel the safest on the system. But one of the things we also found out, that those who wanted more safety and security on the system also tended to be people of colors, Black, Native Americans, seniors, females, and people living with a disability. One example of a response to a survey question was, what made you feel unsafe onboard TriMed buses? The number one response was other riders. But the second response was the lack of transit police. Also recognizing that 29% of the respondents said the presence of transit police also made them feel unsafe. One of the things we did consistently across all of our questions is we tried to isolate and pull out what our Black and Brown and BIPOC communities said. So you'll see here that seniors, Blacks, and people of color were more likely to choose the lack of transit police on the system was an issue that made them feel less safe on public transit. We did a lot of cross-serving of both our own employees and the community on their ideas for making the system safer and more welcoming. And the number one area that came back, both from our staff and the community, was more training for TriMed staff in anti-racism, cultural humility, mental health, and de-escalation services. There was also a lot of interest in TriMed working to form crisis intervention teams to support riders who were experiencing behavioral health or mental health crisis, and increasing the number of staff on the system, specifically culture-specific staff. So it was important for us to know, it was important for us to help our community partners understand what we've done to date, so they can A, see that there was real possibility in making lasting change, but also so we can build off our sort of history of progress. And a lot of the things we realized, people just don't know about, because we, and we need to talk more about it. But one of the things that we've done over the last few years, we changed the TriMed code. For example, fare evasion alone is not a crime. The police also no longer check fares on transit. And we've done more to just increase unarmed security personnel. We've changed rules around interfering with public transportation, and we've done a ton to train folks in civil rights and de-escalation and non-confrontational interactions. An example of this is after our most recent training last fall, over the course of a quarter, we had 24 million boardings. And in that same time period, we only had 23 customer service complaints related to discriminatory behavior, which of course, we investigated. We've also are one of only two transit properties in North America that have done third-party independent studies of racial bias in our citation process. Both times, we partnered with Portland State, which found no racial bias in how we do our citation process. We've done a ton part-working with the state legislature and the ACLU to decriminalize fare enforcement. It no longer goes to Multnomah County court systems. We've done a lot to reduce the fines. It used to be $175 presumptive fine, and now it's $75. And now you can actually sign up for community service or just enroll in our low-income fare program if you cannot pay that fine. And as I said earlier, we've enrolled over 33,000 folks in our low-income fare program. So a little bit more about the work of the committee. The 16-member committee took all the information we gathered through the outreach process, and they met over the course of four weeks, seven meetings, and about 14 hours. And in addition to that, we gave them about 500 pages and multiple papers, survey results, and just all the information that I'm doing a very high run-through now. And what they found from that was a certain series of investment themes emerged. One was system presence. Another was ideas around better and stronger and more community partnerships. There was a lot of interest in having technology or more training and infrastructure improvements, but also crisis response services. So we had to get the committee to get focused, and that really was partly why we focused on the $1.8 million to frame the possibility of what community services we could begin to offer, or community-informed strategies. And so we asked them to rate their primary areas of focus. And what we heard from them was that training in anti-racism or cultural competency was where they thought TriMed can make the most benefit with the reallocation of the resources. But there was strong interest in forming crisis intervention teams to support riders in crisis on the system, and more unarmed TriMed presence, or some form of safety and security presence on the system, and continued broader community partnerships, and even looking at things like rider ambassadors or better infrastructure. And so we asked the committee to give us their focus and their final recommendations, and the committee landed on training, increased presence, and the formation of crisis intervention teams. And this is what they'd asked TriMed to do with the $1.8 million set aside at the beginning. We took this information and we took the results of all the surveys, all the focus groups, both from our employees, but also from all the community partners. And our leadership team identified five specific areas of focus: training, technology, communication, system presence, and infrastructure. And what follows are the different areas of focus and just some highlighted action steps we'll be taking moving forward. First, we identified the different areas of action underneath each topic, the projected timeline, beginning in January as month zero, and the projected cost. And of course, we haven't built out the cost, but we do recognize that what we've identified will far exceed the $1.8 million annual allocation. One example of training that the leadership team has moved forward and that board has, TriMed's board has signed up on, is mandatory de-escalation training for all frontline staff. When it comes to system presence, we are planning, hopefully in the next few months, to develop and launch a new pilot program for TriMed personnel to ride trains at night to provide more presence and support for our riders. We heard a lot from our riders, specifically our female riders, of feeling less safe the later the day gets on the MAX trains. So this is just one area of focus. The idea of recommendation number three, the crisis intervention team, this is something TriMed will be moving forward. Now, we realize that we're not experts in this, and so we'll be working with community and jurisdictional partners to develop a new crisis team pilot model. And we're hoping to partner with what the city's working on and look at some things that happened down in Eugene, Eugene, related to the Kahoots model. When it comes to technology, we have a ton of things we're needing to look into and procure for, but one thing that we know we can do is review the possibility of adding silent alarms to our light rail vehicles. When it comes to infrastructure, we're gonna be exploring new funding alternatives. To do all the things that were identified, we're gonna have to look at new ways of funding. We're talking about ideas related to maybe a TriMed foundation that would allow us to work differently with neighborhood associations. But one of the things that we're gonna be doing as part of this is auditing all of our bus stops, specifically targeting those that are serving primarily communities of color or low-income neighborhoods, and prioritizing the ranking for any upgrades in those communities first. Clearly, we've, through this process, we've identified that communication is always an area for. area that we can improve. And so in order to sort of support this work and keep a community connected, we're going to be forming a new safety and security advisory committee to support the implementation of all of these recommendations and provide a public forum for moving the work forward. So I think I sent out the 25 recommendations a little bit earlier, and I could go back to any of the pages if folks want, but I just wanted to give you a high-level overview of what we're working on. So in summary, all of our community committee recommendations are moving forward. But in addition to that, TRIMET leadership has identified 25 action steps that also reflect other things we heard through the process across the surveys and the feedback loops. We're going to continue to partner with regional policing model with our 14 municipal law enforcement agencies, but we are focused really more so on the community engagement to make the system feel safe and welcoming, and ensuring that innovation is part of all of that work. Currently, we're in the process of just doing what we're doing tonight, which is going to different municipal partners and community groups and legislators and counties and local electeds, and walking through the presentation and asking if there are questions and asking for their support, and if there are community-based organizations within their region that they'd like us to reach out to. There's a lot of what in what you've seen tonight, and what's going to happen next is we're going to work with community to build out the how. So I know I go through pretty fast. I'm more than willing to go back to any of the slides or answer any of your questions. And if there's something I can't answer, I'm sure JC or Marla could. But thank you for your time.
I have a question, and thank you very much for this presentation. I really appreciate it, and I appreciate all of you being here, and I appreciate all this work, because clearly you've been doing a lot of engagement over the last several months during a global pandemic. So, good work. If you can, you offered, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna take you up on it. On slide 27, and maybe the one before, these two things might be related, and I'm just wondering if you might be able to provide a little bit more information about it. There was, you provided some information about two Portland State studies, and I wonder if I'm familiar, I think, with those, and I'm also familiar with another one, and I'm curious to know if maybe there might be some information that was learned in another study that informed perhaps a policy. There you go, on 26, "Reduce the use of interfering with public transportation." And the one I'm thinking about, and I'll just throw it in here in the chat so you all can be on the same page, is one that came to our attention that did show, looking at 10 years of state court records, a pretty big disparity in how folks that found that Black writers were charged disproportionately for interfering with public transit. And I'm so wondering if, you know, if maybe that some of the, you know, some of that information, you know, if TRIMET did incorporate some of that information from that study and the analysis of those 10 years of records into, you know, a policy of not charging as much or changing the rules around interference with transit?
That's a good question, and let me try to answer, and then I'll, if my colleagues want to answer or offer anymore. So about 2016, as part of this whole effort, we worked with our Transit Equity Advisory Committee and really identified a bunch of steps that we wanted to take, and sort of re, and looking at IPT was one of those things. And what we found is that the different counties were enforcing it differently. So what we would see in Monmouth County was not the same as what we would see in Washington and Clackamas. So that was one of the reasons that we and many others have been working to sort of rethink how we use that, and that's why it's being used less. We didn't see that was, I think by the time we did the first study, we certainly didn't see it in the study in 2018, but I think in 2016, it was one of those areas where we wanted to look again. One of the things we found, though, is that we have, a lot of the incidences were coming from the same people. So it was throwing up the data. So for example, we have people with a dozen citations, and if that person happens to be African-American, it might look like African-Americans have more citations, but it's really that one person. So when we, and we adjusted for that in the second round, and we saw that IPT was not happening on the system, where people weren't, A) because we were not really pursuing it, but also we weren't, it wasn't having disproportionate effects on any of our riders across any of the demographics. But that was probably true in 2015 and 16.
Counselor, I would also just note that, you know what, I think that we have learned a lot from all of our studies, and just like, you know, John just mentioned how, you know, a few folks were causing a lot of the citations. I think that's where at some point in time, if we are able to look at different policing models, which Marla's working on, but if we're able to bring on other folks who might have skills in other areas, whether it's mental health or services, I think that that's really kind of an area that's exciting, and I think it's something that we are looking at how we can do. But it just also, those numbers from that study also helps inform us that we might need other help on our system. And I think that we're seeing that across the country and in police departments everywhere. So it has informed us. Marla, did you want to say anything else that you wanted to tack onto that?
Other questions? That was a great question.
I have a question about the majority of folks that might not be able to pay for a fare and then they get fined. Do these tend to be lower-income folks who can't afford a ticket, and therefore, if they get fined, they can't afford to pay the fine or even have the time to do community service? So has that been talked about?
I'll let, I'll give that to Marla. We have a lot of data on that. Go ahead, Marla.
So thanks for the question. Yes, let me share a little bit about the typical riders that don't pay fare on our system. The largest majority of the riders can pay, have the ability to pay, but choose to take a risk and not pay. And so that is the behavior that we're really trying to get fare compliance, we're really trying to educate those riders. It's not worth taking the risk, you know, if you roll the dice, the fine is so low compared to what they may be paying on a daily basis. So they take the risk. The other type of persons that we find that don't pay fare are ones that don't know how to use the system. So we educate them and inform them how to use the system, how to use the ticket machine, how to navigate, and they usually do not have a fare, especially with our tourists or people coming in for conventions. We're aware of people coming in for conventions, and we inform our fare inspectors. We've got large groups of people coming in, help educate and wait, you know, and provide support to them. The other individuals that cannot pay fare, our fare inspectors are instructed to provide information to them so that they can sign up for the low-income or honor fare program. The highest amount, but it's actually our lowest, minimum amount of people who fare evade are those who just will never pay. And it's their ideological choice that they don't want to pay. Sometimes it's mental health issues, sometimes it's behavioral, sometimes they just don't have the capacity to be able to do that. We do have a lot of nondestination riders that we work with, our community-based organizations that work with our houseless folks, and we, excuse me, we do offer up passes for them. So typically, our nondestination riders or our houseless riders will have passes. And just today, as a matter of fact, we worked with Gresham Police Department and provided them some passes for those who are nondestination riders and need a way to be able to get and navigate around the system in a safe manner and not feeling stigmatized because they're houseless. So we do have all of these other opportunities, but we're trying to change behavior of those who have the ability to pay and choose not to.
Can I just ask to clarify, when you say "nondestination riders," you mean people who are riding to stay out of the weather or stay warm and things like that? Okay.
Other questions? Oh, go ahead.
Sorry. I had a couple of very small questions. One was, just if you could give a little more of a definition of frontline staff, I assume that means people who have direct contact with riders, but I don't want to assume incorrectly. And then my other question was, is related to the fact that you've done a lot of work here, and part of, part of the benefit of doing this work is sharing it with the public and working to sort of build those connections and build a different understanding of how TRIMET is working today. So I'm wondering if you could speak a little more about the outreach work that you have folded into this, because I'm sure it's in some of those bullet points that went speeding by on your many slides.
Yeah, and I'll let JC correct me on the frontline staff. So I mean, all of our operators, obviously, are frontline staff, they're out there every day doing the yeoman's, your person's work. But then, you know, I think a lot, there's a lot of miss, I mean, I showed you those six photographs. The vast majority of our frontline staff on the system, not operating a vehicle, are customer service staff. They're there to help people navigate the system. And then we have, historically, we've only had like four or six fare inspectors for like the whole region. I think we're up to maybe eight to 12 right now. Transit police is another area where people think there's this large presence, and there's maybe eight to 10 transit police available at any given time across the three counties, because they're doing shifts. So really, you might see, if you see someone, there's probably a G4S, a security guard next to a ride guide, next to a cleaner, right? And it might look like a lot of TRIMET personnel, but they all have different jobs, and really it's about helping customers navigate and, you know, keeping the system safe and clean to the extent that's possible. And so that's kind of there, and again, it's like customer service staff are the largest pool, and that's what you heard, well, you saw a little bit of that. That's what the more of our writers want to see, just any presence, any formal TRIMET presence generally makes people feel better about the safety of the system, whether it's a security guard, a cleaner, or just a customer service rep. And the other question, I'm sorry, can you say that again? A second question.
I can find my unmute button. Yeah, it was just a more broad invitation to share more about how we're putting this work out to the public.
Yeah, so like I said earlier, we're right. I think Executive Director Blag is very close. I think she might have identified the project manager for all this, because you're right, there are 25 recommendations. Some I think we can get out in six to nine months, other are, it's going to take a ton to audit our safety and security trainings, for example. And so that person, I believe, is coming on in the next few weeks. And then the next step will be develop a process to invite community-based organizations to be part of that advisory committee. We still have all those other monthly engagement opportunities, including like our youth committee will also inform the safety work, but we want a group of folks to kind of partner with us directly and help roll that out. In addition to that, I've done about eight presentations to electeds and about five to community coalitions, and we're going to start doing a more broader group of coalition presentations. We're expecting to continue in this conversation, and we're hoping like everyone else that one of the things that COVID, you know, that us getting emerging from COVID would do is looking at even doing like a community safety forums in the, you know, across each of the counties over the next six months, because this is going to be an ongoing issue. And we did, these are just the first round of ideas, and we want this to sort of be a living process where we can get just-in-time information. And I think one of the exciting things that our leadership and safety knows is that even though it's one service area, we have very specific sort of expectations across the different municipalities and the cities and the counties, and we want to be respective to that. And so continuing engagement is definitely going to be a part of this, so.
Great, thank you.
All right. I could talk all night, so any other questions, please let us know, and we'd love to come back in, you know, in a few months to talk about, you know, other opportunities for people in your community to engage. And we'd also love to know if there are different organizations of any type that you would like us to reach out to, to make sure they understand what we're doing and their role in it, to the extent they have the capacity.
John, Anne Ober, I'm the city manager here. We have a great small team that's working on equity here at the city. I'd like to actually put our equity program manager in touch with you, just to see if there are data sets that we can pull. And also, we're working with Martine over at the county. I know that this is data, if she doesn't already have it, that she would love to have. So any of the data sharing you're willing to provide us would be much appreciated. And Martine also created an incredible list for Clackamas County of our partners here who are working specifically with communities of color. So I would reach out to her if you haven't already, and just pull that list to make sure that those groups are specifically getting a conversation with you.
Yeah, and I think we presented to some of the Clackamas staff, and I don't know if that was one of them, but we did share the data. I mean, so for, we have, I want to say 24 questions, and we asked people, you know, their demographics, so we could really drill down to where they live, you know, what do Black females in Clackamas say about these questions? So we are trying to customize our responses, and although we asked everybody, we did try to center their conversation about BIPOC, within BIPOC communities first, so. But yeah, definitely, we can send that over to you, Anne, and again, I love those contacts for your equity partners.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you. Stay tuned. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, that's okay. This is pretty, well, it's not entirely off the wall. It's not something that's really a question, more than a comment. As we're doing our housing work, we see over and over again the overlap between the need for transit and the need for housing affordability. And I know that's outside of your purview, but I just want you to know that it's something that we're aware of and we're looking at, and particularly as these metro bonds are starting to come online and those dollars are coming up. We have a real interest in that in Milwaukee. We have, we have the Hillside Campus right here in the city, and that is one of Clackamas County's largest sites for housing for very low-income folks who very much do rely on transit. So I guess I'd just say that as you're thinking about housing things and how transit intersects with housing, just know that that's a place where we're keenly interested, because we also are very active on climate, and we're trying to get people out of their cars, and TRIMET is a big partner in that work, so.
That's great, that's great to hear. And we have, I think, a very exciting transit-oriented development program that we work with community to form. I think it has progressed, maybe some of the most progressive language in it. We have goals, and when you look at what we've done over the last four or five years, we've supported the development of, I think, almost 500 units of affordable housing, and we just have a new project that has 200 units in it, which is comparable to some of the regional bonds, although we're not part of those bonds. So I think our team would love to talk to your team about that and what opportunities we can partner with to continue that work across Milwaukee and Clackamas County.
Yeah, I think that, oh, sorry, Mayor, I was just gonna, on that very last point, I participated in a forum with, you know, with some TRIMET folks about sort of the lessons learned from the orange line, and I'm, you know, really, I think, I think some of what you're talking about is probably, you know, probably developed out of some of that, and, you know, what's happening over on, you know, the west side of the river, you know, sort of putting those two things in juxtaposition. I mean, I think it's, I'm really glad, I'm really, really, really glad. You know, Milwaukee might not be benefiting from any of that really right now, but I'm very, yes. But glad to see that that is such a huge part of the conversation on the southwest, the corridor over there. So kudos to you on all of that. Also, I'm going to be really interested to hear from all of you about, you know, post-pandemic, sort of how do we, you know, how do we make sure that, you know, decreased ridership during this, during this episode, you know, doesn't translate into loss of services? Because I am, you know, with the housing, I mean, this is on top of a housing crisis that already was pushing the folks who rely on transit the most out to the places where it was least, where transit was least available. And so we were seeing decreased ridership in the city center and, you know, close-in neighborhoods, and I'm super, super scared about, you know, what that's going to mean post-pandemic, you know, just sort of like, you know, like escalating that even further and with the, you know, with the transportation measure not passing. So yeah, I guess that's just another plug for us as a partner. We love transit and don't, don't want to see any less, less service there.
Counselor, I would just say, we actually have an internal ridership recovery team that is working on this issue, and it has to do with everything from looking at our service to research to finding how to improve the overall customer experience, a marketing campaign. It is, it's multifaceted, because we feel the same way as you, and that we, you know, it's going to be a little bit before we can throw open our doors. Right now, we're only for essential trips, and so we're just, you know, waiting and waiting until, you know, herd immunity, which I heard on the TV last night, it's, once we get to around 70 to 75%, which they think, oh, please, oh, please, oh, please, September, then it could be a time when we throw open our doors and really start welcoming people back, and what does that mean? And I will say partnerships is one of those pieces of that puzzle, because, you know, as we move forward, how can we partner with you to promote things that are happening in Milwaukee that people can take the orange line to? And so it's really, it's, you know, it's going to, it's going to force us all to be creative, to help one another out, because quite literally, we're going to Because quite literally, we're going to have to, you know, pull back our economy, build it all back up from scratch. And so it will take us all working together. I, just a quick note for your housing, I would just note, we do have some amazing TOD folks. John Gardner is absolutely correct. And that we have also, you know, as we've worked with Catholic charities or Reach or other folks around the, the region, we've actually modified our service, whether it's moving a bus stop to accommodate, to accommodate, you know, a development. I know that some, it's kind of funny, some developments have gotten more funding because they are next to transit. So there is just this, this very much a partnership relationship that we would love, love, love to continue to build on. So please let us know.
Well, we will. And, and, you know, you actually already have partnered with us on a housing project. We're just not building housing on it yet. We worked with you for a piece of your remnant property from the Orange Line construction. And our, it happens to be Brownfield, so we're dealing with that issue right now. And, and then moving through the process, but we will be building affordable housing on that property. Hopefully before I'm not mayor anymore, but we'll see. But yeah, we will, we'll reach back out to you on the TOD.
I think the only thing I would add is there's a lot of interest in this. Council seems really engaged tonight, and we know that you're a key partner. So if you're open to it, it'd be great to have you back in four or five months and to continue this conversation. We also are working on our comprehensive plan, land use for residential. And I think that it probably makes some sense for you to be involved as we're looking at those maps as well. So I will be putting our, our lead planner, our senior planner on that in connection with you, J C, just to make sure that we're all talking at the same time.
That's perfect.
Thank you. This is amazing. John, you were incredible. Thank you so much for the presentation tonight.
Thank you, and thank you for the proclamation. It was, it was very well done. I appreciate it. Thanks. That was my second time through your program there, and it was just as interesting the second time. So well done.
You guys did an amazing job with it, and especially angel singing. Kudos to you for, for putting that program together. That was awesome.
Well, the very coolest part of that came from the middle school educators and their connections. So it's all on them. They pulled that out, we just showed up. But thank you. All right. So on to our next item. All right, this is the part of the agenda during which council will hear community members' statements regarding city business. Those wishing to speak, please raise your hand or indicate you wish to speak. Before you make your comments, please state your name and city of residence for the record. If you would like the city to follow up with you, please submit your contact information to OCR@MilwaukeeOregon.gov. As council has other business items on the agenda this evening, speakers will be limited to three minutes each. Because information provided during the community comments may be new, the city manager will respond at the next council meeting to those comments that require follow-up. Before we begin, is there any follow-up from the January 19th community comments? And it's over.
Sure or not? Thank you.
All right, Scott, what do you got?
I see no hands raised, and there are no emails, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Well, if it takes you a few minutes to get in there, we will come back to it if somebody raises their hand. So tonight's consent agenda, which includes the minutes of the January 5th, 2021 swearing-in ceremony, the January 5th, 2021 regular session, and the January 9th, 2021 retreat. Resolution revising the Audit Committee bylaws to expand the number of committee members to between four and five. Resolution appointing Mona Harry, Henry, and Matthew Gake to the Audit Committee. A resolution authorizing a five-year agreement for $215,143.60 to S H I International for City Works Software. And a resolution acting as the local contract review board authorizing the purchase of cellular devices from AT&amp;T. Does any member of council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda as written.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? None heard or seen. Consent agenda passes unanimously. All right, our next item, city events and update. This will be presented by our event coordinator, Brenna Cruz.
All right, sorry, I thought I clicked the unmute button. Here we are. Play my presentations. Perfect, okay. So good evening, Mayor, members of council. Tonight, I'm here to share with you some insights and updates for how staff are evaluating our options for planning and hosting our upcoming community events. So as we all know, COVID continues to impact our communities and our ability to gather together in person. Just acknowledging that Clackamas County continues to remain in the high, or, excuse me, the extreme risk category. And this guidance impacts our indoor and outdoor social gatherings, limiting more than two households. So the city's largest spring and summer events definitely would exceed this threshold. And so therefore, I'm going to be presenting some of our modification recommendations and able to continue to offer them to our community. So first, I also want to share an equity update. Can I apologize? To me, it seems that y'all might be in the way there. I have been sort of engaging with our community leaders and our stakeholders and really listening to the feedback that they have provided specifically in regards to the BIPOC listening sessions and kind of evaluating their recommendations and how we can move forward in terms of our event programs, how we offer them, how we deliver them, and the content that we deliver when we provide them. Also in alignment with council's equity and inclusion goal, we recently hired the Equity Program Manager, John Hennington. And he and I have been meeting together and discussing ways in which we can develop some measurable targets and best practices so that we are able to consistently evaluate equity and inclusion within our events. And some of our, our ways in which we're going to be moving forward with this is looking at how we engage and reach out to the community when we're sharing information about these events and making considerations for both, you know, print and digital marketing, but then also some recommendations and best practices for when and if we translate information provided. We also want to look at who's participating. The city does not sort of require or ask for registration when we have events. And so it's typically a method that's used to evaluate who's participating in regards to demographic information, but also how they learned about the event. So you can, you know, gauge the success or, or look at some alternative options. And so we're trying to get a sense of how we can measure, you know, the, the representation of the community by who's coming to our events. And we're also trying to find some ways in which we can expand our representation in the content, but also the partners that we include in our events. And this will include our sponsors, vendors, the entertainment provided, but also just the, again, the context and the theme of our events so that we can make sure that our events are as diverse as the community that we serve. And so the first event that we are looking at planning and modifying is going to be the Awards Dinner for the Volunteer of the Year. 2019, our Awards Dinner has been postponed. And we are currently accepting the nominations for the 2020 Volunteer of the Year. And so right now, staff are planning to host a joint dinner in September. Most likely will be virtual, but depending on public health guidance, we will look at ways in which we can expand this to possibly have an in-person component and/or a combo thereof of virtual and in-person. So the next big event that we are looking at planning is Earth Day. And we're looking at April 24th for about two and a half hours. We've selected this date because there are some partner events and activities going on the Saturday prior. And so we wanted to sort of leverage the events and information shared, but also have those be an opportunity to cross-promote Milwaukee's Earth Day celebration. We've been collaborating, myself, also a major player in terms of the program development, is the city's Climate Action and Sustainability Coordinator, Natalie Rogers. We presented last week to the Parks and Recreation Board and have taken their feedback and incorporated it into some of the planning and recommendations that, or sort of engagement opportunities that we have outlined there below. We're also looking to collaborate with our regional partners who focus in areas of significance to the city's climate action plan. And so with this event, we really, recognizing that we can't convene in person, we wanted to take the opportunity to use the virtual platform to serve as an educational awareness opportunity and an engagement opportunity to share some sustainability and environmental conservation efforts with the community, but also link them to different staff and community groups and nonprofit organizations so they can learn more about the, the city's actions that we're taking in regards to the climate action plan, but also engage with other like-minded individuals so that way we can build on the community and household activism related to Earth Day. And so we've identified seven different topic areas that we want to incorporate. We will have both staff, or sorry, staff and community groups making particip, or sorry, presentations. They also could be sharing some maybe pre-recorded videos. But we also wanted to have the opportunity to have our event participants engage in a Q and A or discussion-type format. And then also embodying the spirit of Earth Day, we are going to be asking that each of our presenters come prepared with a call to action. And this will range, you know, from small things like maybe considering turning off the lights to broader things like a home energy score assessment and, and looking at some other adaptability or ways that we can change our behavior to support sustainability. And looking at our program, we also wanted to make sure, again, in alignment with the city's equity and inclusion goal, that we are incorporating a diverse group of presenters and topics in the discussion and content provided. And so we want to have a range of not necess, just, you know, options for homeowners, but expand that to possibly renters and also get our youth involved, but also not just at the collegiate level and possibly extending that down to our high school, middle school, and elementary school as well. So again, we're, we're targeting a broad outreach to our youth groups, but then also serving the social, different socioeconomic backgrounds of our community and also those groups who are working directly with our BIPOC community members and our communities of color. So again, that our information share and the call to actions are really, again, reflective of a broad spectrum of sustainability and ways in which we can incorporate environmental conservation into our, our lives, but also how it's fitting into our community. So we're also looking at a variety of engagement options in regards to outreach to the community, leveraging social media, the city's website, the Engage Milwaukee platform, and the pilot. And then again, including outreach to our local schools and youth service organizations. Through our discussion with PARB, it was brought up the idea to have a photo submission for the work groups. And so we want to have that be a collaborative way for the community to share how they're celebrating and acknowledging Earth Day. And then also promote and share the, any volunteer or work group activities and then cross-promote with our partners and have them leverage and share to that, their networks as well. So we're just targeting the broadest audience possible for participation. And then on to the next significant event coming up. COVID, in our regards for safety and public health, it really impacts the sort of essence of our in-person event to host Carefree Sunday. And so we're, we're acknowledging that these constraints mean that we will have a less robust program that we can provide to the community. It also means that we will have reduced financial support in regards from our sponsors and vendors and also reduced activities for the community to participate in. In regards, sometimes, you know, in the parks, we would have our music and different entertainment for folks to gather and watch. And it's just really not feasible in the environment that we find ourselves in right now. So what we're looking to do is propose that we plan up to three smaller routes throughout the city just to provide some type of expanded recreation without any enhancements, meaning entertainment, sponsors, vendors, et cetera. But just really to get the community moving in a time in which they're looking to get outside and be active. An option two would be a city-supported expansion of the Block Party program. And that way, we could be serving all of the NDAs. But also, this provides a better way to kind of control or limit the amount of people that may be participating in a particular event so that we can, again, just bear in mind and ensure that we're complying with the public health guidance. So we are currently utilizing our network here in reaching out to local municipalities. And Portland Sunday's Parkway's team has set up a meeting for us next month to discuss with the broad group of cities who actually put on events like our Carefree Sunday so that we can leverage what we've learned from the year prior and kind of get a better sense of how these groups adapted to COVID and see if there's possible opportunities for us to implement that knowledge in our planning. We're also, through my conversations last year with planning some of our other events, leveraging the sort of ideas that were shared or, you know, if somebody has a recommendation, you know, oh, I saw so-and-so did this type of event. Again, just kind of putting those ideas out there and brainstorming what our options would be. I saw recently too that they expanded the Lloyd Center parking garage to be a roller rink. So again, just an idea that, oh yeah, that's, that could be easily incorporated, but understanding the parameters we would need to put around that. So my next steps and recommendation, acknowledging that there are a lot of variables right now in regards to COVID with the vaccines. And there will probably be additional guidance coming out later in the spring with how we can begin sort of reopening and expanding those thresholds for gatherings is to return to council in May with some more concrete options and recommendations for how we would move forward with Carefree Sunday. And with that, I will take any questions or open up to discussion from council.
If nobody else has anything, I'll start. I don't know if you were able to catch any of the Porch Fest that happened also during the pandemic, but it was, I would say, phenomenally successful, very well received. And I got to go to a lot of the different venues. And I don't think I saw any, like, bad COVID behavior anywhere. I think people did a really great job of sort of, you know, staying six feet apart and wearing their masks and all those things. That coupled with the fact that, you know, this, we were planning to do our That coupled with the fact that, you know, this, we were planning to do our, our Carefree Sunday in September, I think. And that is the current best guess, or maybe it's the really hopeful guess, I don't know, of when Oregon might have reached herd immunity. It seems like we could look at a date towards the end of September or maybe even early October and then carefully design something that could work, even if we're not quite at herd immunity, but still have a pretty cool experience where people were riding and walking and then roller skating and all the ways they used Carefree Sunday, and having music, you know, all the Porch Fest-style, small bands and single performers. I think, I think there's a real opportunity there that could still be done and be safe and feel like community coming together, which people are going to be desperate for by the time we get there.
Yeah, I think we're all at a point in which we're desperate for some, some type of return to a more traditional environment of engagement and activities. I am very proud of our community and the ways in which they are COVID-compliant in regards with the mask-wearing and the social distancing and things. I feel like we've definitely adapted very, very well. And recognizing that and then also seeing the great experience that Porch Fest was able to do, absolutely. I, if we do plan for, you know, the smaller routes throughout the city, I definitely want to leverage our opportunities, our artists, et cetera, to have some type of way to incorporate them. I just don't want to call them out as a place to stop and gather, so that way, we can, you know, ensure that there aren't those larger threshold sort of gatherings happening. But absolutely, it is, is on top of mind of how we can partner together with our different community groups who are continuing to serve during these times.
Can I add two things really quickly, just about your questions, Mayor? So, we, Porch Fest Round Two is in the works. I know the Arts Committee just leads that. So, we're supporting that through that as well. So, I do think you'll see that happen again, but it is, I would agree, it was successful. And it's something the community, I think, seems, wants to see again, and there's interest and support for doing it. So, I just wanted to let you know that you're likely to see that happen again. But then, just on the timing for Carefree, now, again, we're in a weird world where I'm not sure time matters. But we had laid claim to the first Sunday in August. And we did that to avoid several other large events. The Bridge Pedal, I mean, there was, we kind of, we had to shoehorn it in to try to make sure it didn't overlap. And we also were trying to avoid wildfires, which do, you all are more expert in this than me, but I mean, we saw, we saw last September. So, I think it was us trying to avoid other big events and fire is how we ended up early in August. And we were gonna, our plan was to keep doing it that first Sunday in August to build kind of a constituency around it, because we were drawing more of a regional crowd. So, I just wanted to let you know that in terms of timing is where we were.
Talk about, when Brenna talked about three smaller events, does that mean three different dates or three different routes on one date? I wasn't clear what she was.
So, a lot of it comes down to cost and not just for staff time, but also for our vendor time. And most of the budget comes down to the closures. And so, we would be assessing, you know, the length of the closures and if it was more feasible to serve more community members, either, you know, alternating weekend days or having them all on the same day. But again, we also have to sort of play the speculation numbers game with what's going to draw more people. So, it's, it's all going to have to find this delicate balance. But I just want to say, I'm definitely running through our options and acknowledging as well, too, that we're all sort of, kind of more normalizing these best practices through COVID times as well. And so, understanding that we're adapting and continuing to be safe.
So, I noticed your slide said, you know, come back in May for a decision. And that makes perfect sense to me. I mean, you know, we'll know a lot more by April and certainly by May in terms of what really the vaccine rollout has been, et cetera, et cetera. So, that makes sense to me. I will just say that it seems odd to me to put block parties on the table, because a bicycling event where people are moving is a far less risky thing than a bunch of people all on one block. And I do think, I mean, there are ways to have safe block parties, I'm sure. But I think the, the risk level of, you know, contagion is definitely higher there than in a, than in a event where people are moving.
And I'll just add that I know that, you know, our NDA has been talking about doing their regular picnic event and holding it in late September. And, and generally, these are things that the NDAs all budget for and take care of on their own. So, I don't, I don't know what we would, why we would be involved in that particularly. I mean, I think they're wonderful events. It's not against them, but I, I think they kind of have their own life and their own people who are really invested in doing them the way they do them. So, I don't, I don't see a lot of value added to making a Carefree Sunday out of some sort of coordinated block party event. And I, I share Councilor Beatty's kind of concerns about safety. If, if the city did do a boost to those efforts, I think we could end up with too many people going. And I, I have some equity concerns around how many people engage and who feels comfortable engaging with NDA events. So, block parties, I, I think we need to do more thinking about how we engage with all members of our community, not just homeowners, before we are ready to consider the city itself being involved in a block party-type event.
That's good feedback. Thank you both.
I mean, I do like the mayor's idea, I will say. I like the mayor's idea of the Porch Fest and maybe you don't map which porches are being used so that you, you know, don't encourage, you know, people knowing where to stop. It just is somewhere along the route. So, I, I think there could be a clever thing there. I wanted to go back to the Earth Day unless people had more on that one. You know, a couple of years ago, council was going to do, I mean, we do need to do sustainability rollout pointers, tips. And, and we haven't ever, you know, that's part of the climate action plan and we haven't ever really rolled that out in any, you know, consistent way. And I know a couple of years ago, 2019, I think that was, the idea was that Earth Day was going to be five days of action or something that I don't really recall that we pulled off in, in any really meaningful way. I have to say, that description of a day as just somebody, if it were a rainy crappy day, I would say, okay, I'm going to stay in and I'm going to zoom in for this. If it's a nice day at the end of April, I'm not sure I'm staying in and, and listening to those talking heads. That, to me, I don't know. That, to me, wasn't wholly satisfying, I'll just say. And I do know there's been reluctance about work parties. And certainly, the way we traditionally, as a city, did Earth Day where there wasn't registration and there wasn't, you know, there were just masses of people, could not be done. But a lot of groups, including like Johnson Creek Watershed Council is about to have their watershed-wide event. They're going to do, you know, they're going to have 150 or 200 people, but they're going to have them in groups of 15 at different spots along the creek. So, I mean, I do think there are ways to have a day of service and utilize people in smaller groups. But anyway, I just, I don't, I'm kind of, I'm not sold on the Earth Day idea, I guess, I would say.
Yeah, and I, I think in discussing with Natalie, we have a very broad spectrum of awareness and understanding of what sustainability is. And so, we wanted to find a way to start marrying that with the city's climate action plan and work that we're doing in regards to that. And also, didn't want to limit the volunteerism and the sort of activism to a specific location or action. That is why we, too, wanted to leverage our different community partners to have their own actions and events related to the topics in which that they will be discussing. Some of that is in regards, you know, maybe tree planting, maybe food waste and, and other ways to kind of get involved with their community in order to make sure that, that, again, we're just serving a diverse group that may be interested in sustainability efforts. So, absolutely, I acknowledge what you're saying. And I think we will definitely have a type of SOLVE event to partner with as well, but absolutely happy to promote and share and, and find a ways, maybe the city that can take more of a lead in regards to that actual volunteerism piece of Earth Day.
Well, I, I want to just point out that our climate action plan is about getting carbon emission reductions as many as possible, as fast as possible. So, the reason we haven't prioritized this kind of public outreach that, that we're discussing here is because it's very hard to get measurable, achievable results from that kind of stuff. Not that it's not important. And I love, actually, this Earth Day plan. I think it's really good. I, I was, you know, I agree that if we have wonderful weather, we will have fewer participants. The chance of wonderful weather is, you know, 50/50. And, and I think it's important for us to take the opportunity to provide this and, and to share some of the work we're doing, because a lot of it is really technical. And, and as you just said, Brenna, people have widely varying understandings of, of what sustainability is and what it means and how we do it. But I, I don't think that that means that we need to prioritize it more. I think we're doing a good job of doing that. And I think that taking the opportunity on Earth Day to highlight that and to do some outreach is, is a good way to, to make sure that we're still conserving our resources for doing the big work while also being transparent with folks about ways that they can participate. And, you know, we do have community partners who are doing work groups. And like you mentioned, we could do something with SOLVE. And I think it's really a matter of just ensuring that NCPRD or Johnson Creek or, or whomever might be organizing some sort of work event knows that, hey, we've got this thing going from 10:30 to 12:30. We could actually use it to highlight whatever you're doing. If you want to schedule something for one to three, we would love to use that as a launching pad for you. But, but I don't think that that's actually work that the city itself needs to do. We've had a long history of being really great partners with, with the folks who do that on the ground, in the weeds, mucking around work that, that I love. So, I think all of us on council love to do, so. But yeah, I think this, I think this looks really good.
I'll just add one thing to those comments and just say, I believe the, the Five Days of Climate Action was actually my idea and no one liked it. Like, it was just me. It didn't work out great. So, I just want to acknowledge that this is a new team, Natalie and Brenna. And I think I hear you, and I've had some of the same concerns, which is, oh, people are zoomed out. You know, nobody's going to want to listen to a Zoom. And I think we have a ways to go, but I am really excited about the blend they're trying to do, which is keep a virtual meeting tight, but make it spider web out to in-person, community-led activities where you can go, you can do a thing. So, maybe it's, you know, Lisa Lashbrook talking to you about parks, but she's asking you and encouraging you to sign up for the SOLVE event with her. And you go do that. I mean, so they really are, I just want to give them credit, because they're doing it in a smarter, better, more interactive way than, than the last attempt, so.
They're infomercials.
They are infomercials.
That we can use if we record it again and again, so, yes.
I think that's it for us.
Mr. Mayor, I think you're on mute.
COVID, okay.
God, I said such brilliant things, too. So, if nobody has anything else on that, thank you very much. We look forward to seeing you in May. And any further conversations or ideas, I'm sure Brenna and Kelly will be happy to hear them. Thank you.
Yes, we like feedback. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brenna. Okay, let's see, what's next? Mayor-Council Communication Agreement or Resolution, which theoretically I am presenting. So, you've all, well, some of you have seen this many, many years. Some of you have seen it once. I think we all got a chance to talk about it at the retreat. And I don't know if anybody's got changes they would like to see or comments on it. But the, the general idea of, of a council communication agreement is to sort of promote civility and, and a team effort. We don't always agree with each other on everything, but we often look that way because of the way we behave. And I think that, that is in some part due to our agreement, but more to the spirit by which we all agree to it. You know, there are many councils in this region that are jealous of, of how cohesive we are. And, and I think this, this is part of it, that this council was not always this cohesive. So, I, I, I like the agreement personally and I, so if, if nobody has any comments on it, which I'm welcome, I would entertain a motion to approve it.
I think we, you know, we all got our chance to comment at the, and wordsmith a little bit at the retreat. And so, I think it was just the desire to, to have this conversation in front of the public about why we have it. And I, I mean, I think you did a good job of saying why we have it. So, I would move to approve the, the Mayor-Council Communication Agreement.
I'll second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the resolution adopting the Mayor-Council Communication Agreement. Is there any further discussion?
I would just say that it's timely. I think, I would just want to interject that this, you know, we've got another, we've got another resolution coming up tonight. And I think, you know, the way that we behave here on council and the honesty that we bring to our conversations, I think, is really important. And I wish more elected officials adhered to the principles that we've outlined here.
And it's not just because it's more pleasant for us. It makes us so much more effective for residents of Milwaukee. We get work done. We don't spend it at each other's throats. So, and I, I really cherish that.
And, and it makes us more approachable. I mean, it's harder to go before a council or a commission that is busy biting each other's necks. All right, so there is no further discussion. All those in favor?
I am.
I opposed. None heard. It passes unanimously. Thank you all very much. So, our next item is legislative and regional policy issues. Kelly, do you have anything in particular for us tonight?
I don't have a presentation. I was going to quickly recap some of the conversations we've been having around green tariff, just to make sure everybody's on the same page with that. And then, I have some clarifying questions for you all, but no PowerPoint. So, yeah, we, a couple, who all participated in the League Lobby Day? So yeah, we, a couple, who all participated in the league lobby day last week? I know I was on the call. I know, yeah, Councilor Beatty and the mayor, Anne was in and out. So that happened. And, and it was, I would say, one of the more helpful things, if you feel like digging into it, is I forwarded you all the links of all the presentations because those went by really fast. So if you know there's an area that you do care about, housing or policing, or whatever it might be, it's not a bad idea to go just jump on there and see what bills the league is tracking. But I'm not going to make you all listen to me drone on and on about those. But I wanted to make sure that you both had opportunities, Lisa and Mark, to share anything that you wanted to from that day.
Well, I thought it was, I took a ton of notes. I have like eight pages or nine pages of notes. I thought it was, yeah, really useful to hear. It's not, you know, it's pretty similar to the other city days I've done, but it was nice to have it. This is a one place where I didn't mind it being remote because it was, you know, it was a half a day instead of a whole day that it takes to go to Salem and do the thing. So the one thing I did not hear anybody talk about, and I was surprised, and I'm, I have not done any OLS research to see what's out there, but in light of, you know, in light of the year so far, I was, well, in light of, you know, years, many years of history, but especially the year so far this year, I was really surprised that there was no mention of any kind of gun safety legislation. And I would think that that would be a priority, and I was really surprised that there was none.
You have to remember that the majority of the numbers of cities in LOC, therefore the way LOC tends to trend, that would not be a top priority.
Anything else, anything else from that day or anything, Mark, that you want to highlight from the mayors specifically?
It was very similar to the in-person ones. A little less effective on the very last part of it, of the day, which is to actually, you know, get to hobnob with the various representatives and often the governor and get to know people and start to make those connections, which then becomes useful later on in the session and, and over the years as we're advocating for things. It's, it gives us an opportunity to, to begin those relationships. So that was unfortunate, but I think overall, the two priority bills that we, the two bills that we are prioritizing, we will be getting tacit support from LOC. I think there is one bill that we may want to keep our eyes on because LOC, I think without any kind of a vote, has decided to oppose it, which is the bill that changes the percentage of the highway fund that is to be dedicated to bike path infrastructure. Obviously for us, that would be highly useful because we are putting in a whole lot of bike path infrastructure. So there is no amount of money that could be thrown at that that would be too much. But they are, LOC is opposing, is opposing that bill.
Oh, sorry. Can you help me understand this? We just had a whole long process where ODOT did a bunch of public input requests and yada, yada, to tinker with those percentages. So you're telling me that there's a bill out there that would just erase all of that and just say, this is how it is?
This is different. So there was the bike bill. Well, number one, there's a constitutional limitation on where gas tax expenditures can go. So there was, there was the 1% for bikes. I can't remember why that happened, but there's been this set aside. And so this is different. It would, it would change it at the statewide level, the required amount, the required percentage that has to be spent on bike infrastructure at a, at a different level. So yes and no. But the, all the percentages that you just got to hear about ad nauseam over and over again in really boring meetings are about the funding streams as they exist today and those limitations. This would actually, would change something kind of up here.
Up there.
Does that make sense?
It actually makes it, you know, the, the change that's being proposed would actually make that fund, you know, quasi usable. I mean, I, I'm trying to, when I first got on council and learned about that percentage and learned that we got a chunk of that funding, and then we were supposed to use a portion of that for bike infrastructure. I said, I am not seeing any of this happening in Milwaukee. What, what are we spending our money on? We were spending our money on street sweeping the bike lanes. That was how the city was saying that, that we are spending money on, on bike infrastructure. And they got away with it. So the LOC opposing this because it will make cities spend money on bike infrastructure is disingenuous and ridiculous. And I pushed back pretty hard in the chat on that day, but we'll see.
Okay. I think, is there anything else from that? Otherwise I'll move on to my one, my one recap and my one question. So we, there's been a lot of conversations that I'm now just barely conversant in, that have resulted from pre-session work that Natalie and Peter and Mark and Kathy had been doing with PGE about a green tariff. And just my very basic description of this is we want to hit our climate goals by 2030. To be able to do that, we have to be able to provide an easily accessible renewable option for people to purchase. There's some complicated, complicated things that kind of need to happen behind the scenes so that a utility can give us that thing so people can buy into it, right? It's, it's a, it's a key portion of how we see us being able to actually hit our goals. So it was the one place that there had been some, there's been some work happening, not the one place, but the main place where there's been actual drafting happening and where there was effort to potentially find a carrier or a sponsor for a bill. So that has become more urgent and more lobby, real lobbying is happening on this one because it's so specific. What we need is actually so specific to the city of Milwaukee that if it doesn't go the way that we need it to go, it could actually harm us and prevent us from getting what we need accomplished. So Anne's been involved, Mark's been involved, Kathy's been involved. We've been having a lot of meetings with, I've been in the meeting with Representative Power. We're, we've met with Senator Taylor today, and we have a meeting to kind of probe this a little bit more with some Department of Energy folks as well. So kind of all in. And the reason why I'm telling you this is because when we're all in on, on it, we, we have to be real careful about what else we go all in on at the same time. And we hadn't really talked about this all, we've talked about the issue, but I hadn't talked about this level of effort with everyone. So I wanted to let you all know, it's happening. We're, we're talking to our elected officials and we're asking them for this and saying that it's our top priority. And I want to make sure that that is our top priority, or if I'm not kind of, I don't want to be overstaffing something when we actually really think it should be the building codes or we really think it should be the Marine Board. And I'm not saying we can't support other, there's a big difference between saying, LOC, we think you're wrong about the 1% thing. We're writing a letter to the committee that says we like it, right? We can send like a hundred of those, no offense. I mean, I don't want to write them all, but like, we can do that level on a broad array of things where we have to make sure we're not stepping on each other's toes is mainly Karen and Kathleen and mainly on like amendments or bill draft language. Because I just, I want to make sure we're asking for what we, we want in those spaces and not putting other people at risk. So I just wanted y'all to have, I wanted to tell you what we were up to so nobody was in the dark about that. And then also just give everybody a chance to make sure we're on the same page. So if we need to change course, we can do so.
No, I think, I think you're right. I have the REACH Code in my mind nearly as important. And I've been queuing it up equally with the MMC, with the Metro Mayor's Consortium. So Thorn Run will be lobbying for both of those bills on our, on our, well, on, on the behalf of the entire Metro Mayor's Consortium. But yeah, I think, I think, you know, big picture wise, the PGE bill is probably more important. I mean, we've been told that, that maybe they don't even need this. Maybe the PSC can just say, we can do that, and then we can do that. So, but, but all things being equal, yes, the PGE bill is the one that we have to get passed. I think the REACH Code bill is very important though, and I, I don't want to lose sight of, of that bill because that also has a lot of honest to God lobbying going in behind it. And, and a lot of serious people engaged, and there's more cities signing on to that every day. I can't remember, I think we're up to 10 or 12, I think as far out as Bend and Salem and so. Those are the two.
Well, and I would, I would push back on that a little because the difference between those two, and I've been a part of almost all of the REACH Code conversations as well. It is important work. It is work that has a broad coalition of support. It is work that already has lobbyists who are lobbying for it. The PGE bill, we're it. We are the only ones advocating for it because of what Kelly said, because it is so specific to our needs. That's not to say that it won't serve other communities, but we're the ones who are really going to bat for it. So, so I actually do think that it's clearly our priority. I think that I and the mayor and anyone else who wants to join in have an ongoing commitment to support the REACH Code, and I absolutely will go and testify for it, and I absolutely will make sure that we are sending letters and doing all the things. But in terms of staff time, Natalie's been giving a lot, and Peter's been giving a lot to that as well. And, and I hope that they can continue to be engaged, but very clearly want to say that the PGE bill, as far as a legislative priority that might take your time, Kelly, is higher up there.
Well, I think this is one of those nuanced time where it matters for our legislators, especially R2, what's most important for our work and what we're asking them to do for us. And so it's not that we're not asking for them to support REACH. I think it's absolutely appropriate for us to, to ask them to support REACH, but there's not as much of a lift because they're not our state senator and our state representative for a piece of legislation that we are, that we need specifically. So it's just, it's nuanced, but it goes back to, it's similar to talking about goals. If you have a list, there's no priority. And so my ask is just, this is going to be, this is a harder lift because we don't have the lobbyists and we don't have everyone else. So if we want it to happen, we really do have to be consistent when we're talking to our people that this is the thing we need from them. Everything else should be, be accomplishable. They should want to do it because there's a broader coalition beyond just us.
Do we have any opposition to, to this bill?
Right now, we don't, but we still have some edits after today that at least one of the edits that I'm going to be speaking to one of my former colleagues about is whether or not this remains a solely opt-in, I'm sorry, opt-out option or an opt-in. And I have serious concerns about that, and that change could actually create an opponent. So there's definitely work still to be had and are, because we're so involved in the day-to-day around this right now. It's possible, but I'll need, I'll especially need Council President Heisey and Mayor Agamba to, to join me in many of those meetings if we're going to be successful.
I don't disagree that that's the priority when it comes to asking for something. I just want to put the other, asking for something that we need written for us. I do want to put out there that if there really does end up being an infrastructure bill and there's a potential for getting the dam removal in there, I will be, that, that to me will be a very high priority as well. That's not something we would be writing. We would just be advocating for why the dam should be part of it. But that will be it. You know, that is something hopefully, I mean, there, you know, that could happen on the federal level, could happen on the state level. We missed it in 2009 because by hair, hair's breadth of getting stimulus funding that time. So I think we definitely have to be ready this time.
And, and we're set up more for that now because of the work that, that Nikki Wicks has been doing and the, the funding. So they, I don't know if the rest of the council knows this, but they did get that last grant that they needed in order to do a full, you know, design or, or I guess not a full design because they're not designing the new bridge that would go in, but the work that would then allow it to be presented as a shovel-ready project to, to the powers that be that, that might be throwing down that kind of infrastructure money.
I do appreciate you bringing that one up because that is, to me, oriented towards the federal delegation, at least the funding sources that Neil's been talking about. And it is the one that I know about of ours. So if you have another one that you're like, you know what? I do have a thing and it's $35 million and it's over here. I would love to know what that is because I do only know of the one federal infrastructure kind of big ask from the city at this time that we've been working with partners on it, and it is the dam. So thank you for bringing that up.
I also just want to bifurcate priorities at the county, I'm sorry, at the state versus priorities at the federal level are just two totally different packages that we're looking at. So I have no concerns about that being at the federal level. But I, Councilor Beatty, am I missing a bill that you're expecting in the state legislature around the dam?
Not a bill around the dam, just a potential for an infrastructure stimulus kind of bill. It was very nebulous when discussed last week at City Day.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I found that at odds with the headline today that I saw across my screen that said, Oregon is going to be in the hole $1.5 billion due to the fires and all the pandemic things and everything.
I haven't heard a lot about infrastructure at the state level. I, I bet I could be missing it. I mean, I know that there's just, what I, the main message I took was, we don't know what the feds are going to do. We don't know what's coming, and we don't want to make deep cuts if we don't have to make deep cuts because aid is on the way. So it seemed like they were keeping their, some things vague and open to be receptive to potential aid. And it seemed like Senator Courtney didn't like that. Then it was stressing him out, and he wanted him to start doing the budget. That was my, that's my headline. Okay, this was really helpful. I appreciate you talking it through with me. Again, I just want to disclose, and I wanted to hear where everybody's at on priorities, and I got that from you. So thank you, and that's all I had.
Cool. Thank you. So in this vein, we also have the resolution that I sent around a new or a slightly somewhat edited version. Let me pull that up. It, it does still have a typo that we'll need to fix before we sign it and send it out to people. But the, the main question was the now there for's and the changes that we made in that. The second, the to be further resolved at the end. If everybody, if those worked for everybody as written, then we can move ahead as everybody had a chance to look at those.
Where's the typo? I, Airwave's got corrected.
Yes. Now the typo is in the title, actually.
Well, I never read the titles.
I didn't either until I sent it, sent back to Scott. Looks awesome. It's perfect. And then I read it and I went, wait. Ryan Markie.
I have the version that the title is fixed. Would you like me to share the screen?
Sure.
Everyone see that?
Not yet. No, there we go.
So reaffirming has been fixed.
Cool. Perfect. And then scroll down to the, to the now there for's. Okay.
I will just note the title is still not fixed. It says reaffirm ring. Yeah, I, I mean, I'm fine with it. I, I think there's more to say about, about Scholl than just social media, but you know. I, I think there's more to say about Scholl than just social media, but, you know, I'm not the, you know, I'm not the most fully aware of all the places and things he's said things. I know he's said some things on the record at meetings, so it's not just social media, but I'm fine with leaving it like that.
Yeah, it's, you know, I also, I wanted to roll in his, his encouragement to do violence to people that sort of disagree with where he is. Because I think it's that attitude that got us, you know, the historically horrible event at the nation's capital, and having elected leaders saying the kinds of things that he's been posting can't happen. It can't be done. It can't, it's not acceptable. And he hasn't said anything like that, at least that I'm aware of, on the dais. He definitely has said things that are racially biased on the dais. Racially and religiously.
If council proposes to adopt this tonight, I recommend it be read into the record. But, and I also thought sharing to the conversation.
Okay. So any other concerns, thoughts, changes?
Thank you, Mark and Kathy, for putting this together. I really appreciate it.
Welcome. All right, I will, unless somebody else would like to, I will read it.
I'll share the screen again, so that whoever wants to.
It's fuzzy on my screen, but I'm going to read it off the line, since I'll get reaffirming right, it doesn't matter. A resolution of the city council of the city of Milwaukee, Oregon reaffirming our, our community values. Whereas the council has previously recognized the terrible role white supremacy has played in our history through the adoption of resolution 29, 2019. And whereas the events in our nation's capital on January 6, 2021, were a violent and disturbing affront to democratic rule, fueled in part by white supremacists organizing with the intent of insurrection. And whereas elected leaders at every level of governance play in a critical role in defining and upholding community values, free speech and the rule of law. And whereas the erosion of a healthy and unbiased press has resulted in the loss of a common understanding of events in our society. And whereas the council has in the past affirmed Milwaukee as a place of inclusion and acceptance through the adoption of resolution 115, 2016. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Milwaukee, Oregon, that the city of Milwaukee remains committed to welcoming, serving, and protecting residents and visitors without regard to race, origin, religion, income, gender, sexual orientation, or immigration status. Be it further resolved that the Milwaukee City Council calls upon Clackamas County Commissioner Mark Scholl to resign, due to his inability to fairly represent the entire community based on his, on numerous bigoted and violent posts on social media. Be it further resolved that the city, Milwaukee City Council calls upon the United States Congress to take action to disallow the broadcasting of lies and hate speech by anyone using public airwaves and purporting to be a news organization. I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the resolution of the city council of the city of Milwaukee, Oregon reaffirming our community values. I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass a resolution, the city council of the city of Milwaukee, Oregon reaffirming our community values. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. None heard. It passes unanimously. So obviously, we want this sent to all of the members of the Clackamas County Commission and our federal delegation, and the paper. Sorry. Trying to find my. All right, that's it then. Do we have any council reports?
Just the, it came in, you, it didn't sound like you had seen it, mayor, but Neil did send the press release about the study, and then it to everybody on council.
Okay, good.
Just before the meeting began, so it's out there.
Awesome. All right. Well, I look forward to your program tomorrow night, Councilor Yamas. Good luck.
Thank you.
And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
I'll second.
It has been moved and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 We are adjourned.